Especially our waste haulers, you know, they have a lot to lose if this is not successful.
But I want to emphasize, our goal is not to get refunds for mixed pickups, it's not to have overflowing trash bins and to get the service that we require for our building and our tenants.
I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Both councilmen are also open to the possibility of apartment buildings sharing bins in order to lower costs. Well, turning now to tax season, and you may be leaving money on the table and not even know it. Every year, an estimated $300 million is left in unclaimed tax credits, money that hard-working families like yours are not claiming. But as Rasha Goel explains, the city is helping you get your cash back.
Free Tax Prep LA is at your service. It's a campaign to educate eligible Angelenos on how to claim tax credit.
There's a thing called the Earned Income Tax Credit. This is money that can come back to taxpayers, particularly to low-income taxpayers, but we know that billions of these tax credits are not being claimed.
Officials say individuals may be eligible to file for free and get up to $6,000 cash back. And for the first time this year, the state is giving freelance work a tax credit as well.
So if you earn under $54,000, you can get as much as $9,000 in cash back to your family.
Some of this money is unclaimed as people are not filing.
Now, there's some people who haven't filed for a while and maybe are nervous about doing so, but it's a great opportunity to get current because no matter how long it is that you haven't filed, you can still file, make it up, and get money back.
Dora Ariaga, a mother of two teens, has been receiving help on her taxes from the Hollywood Family Source Center.
I was stressed about my husband who hasn't done his taxes in the past. I learned that YPI can help my husband file his taxes even for previous years.
Again, residents are highly encouraged to file their taxes and claim their tax credit. After all, it is your money. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
To find out more information or locations, log on to freetaxprepala.com. Do you know the way to San Jose? Well, how about LA City Hall? Well, that's where Grammy-winning superstar Dionne Warwick was honored for decades of uplifting music and philanthropy. Gil Reyes has more from African-American Heritage Month festivities.
With fellow artists sweetly serenading her with her own hits, singer Dionne Warwick baskes in the adulation. She receives this year's Living Legend Award to kick off African-American Heritage Month at Los Angeles City Hall.
This has been a day that I will cherish for the rest of my life. What a way to be honored.
It's the latest accolade for the five-time Grammy winner, but did you know Dionne Warwick was also the first U.S. Ambassador of Health and a United Nations Global Food and Agriculture Ambassador? Her voice and humanitarianism have attracted fans worldwide.
I thank you all for being here for me and with me. It means a lot.
Other honorees on this special month include retired Army Lieutenant Colonel Patricia Jackson Kelly, Noel Massey, the President of U.S. Operations at UPS, and L.A. Superior Court Judge David S. Cunningham III. Also immortalized with her own postage stamp is the late, great Lena Horne, singer, dancer, and of course, civil rights activist. All these details make Carolyn Taylor proud.
We have done so many things and involved in so many contributions, but a lot of people don't know it.
And that's why African-American Heritage Month is so important, so people, especially younger generations, will never forget. Outside City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
For a full schedule of African-American Heritage Month events in the city, log on to culturela.org. Well, during African-American Heritage Month, we're highlighting some organizations in the South L.A. community that have not only impacted L.A.'s past, but continue to impact our present. One group is the controversial Black Panthers. While some call them heroes, others call them extremists, as armed citizen patrols clashed with law enforcement, leading to bloody confrontations with police in cities nationwide, L.A. included, though this piece of history is often overlooked. Gil Reyes shines some light.
December 1969, a bloody five-hour shootout between LAPD SWAT officers and the L.A. Chapter of the Black Panthers erupted on 41st Street and Central Avenue at the Panthers' L.A. headquarters. Surprisingly, no one was killed, and perhaps even more shocking, no Panthers were convicted.
Because it was their constitutional right to be in this building here and conduct their business, and it was not the right of the police to come inside and ambush them without identifying themselves at all.
Filmmaker Gregory Everett returns to the scene of the violence, now a parking lot, to plug his film 41st and Central: The Untold History of the L.A. Black Panthers. The Black Panthers, an armed socialist group, got its start in Oakland, California, to challenge police brutality and create programs for underserved communities like free breakfast for children. But they were also at constant odds with the FBI and local police. L.A.'s chapter was their biggest, and more Panthers from Southern California were killed fighting for their causes than in any other region.
Whether it was actually their physical life or their life in jail, you know what I mean, to just be able to fight and protect, you know, people like me.
L.A. artist Enkwanee pays tribute to L.A. Chapter founder Alprentice Bunchi-Carter. He and another Panther leader were assassinated on the UCLA campus by political rivals in 1969. There's also this tribute to Geronimo Pratt, Panther leader and godfather to murdered hip-hop artist Tupac Shakur. These local figures are documented in Everett's film, which has the full support of L.A. City Councilmember Curran Price, despite its controversial stance against alleged police abuse.
So Curran is a very brave person to realize how important it is and to assist us in getting the word out and making sure that the legacy of the Black Panther Party here in Los Angeles is not forgotten.
And L.A. City Councilmember Curran Price could be pulling even more strings to keep the memory of the L.A. Black Panthers alive, planning some sort of dedication ceremony here on 41st and Central somewhere down the road. Reporting from South L.A., I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The film occasionally screens at UCLA and remains on the festival circuit. Find out more at fouronecentral.com. Lights, camera, action, and the State of Hollywood event is on. Anna Marcos brings us more on the yearly business get-together and what it's all about. Anna.
Yana, as you can see, the State of Hollywood event is a huge Tinseltown affair, as Hollywood's movers and shakers gauge the health of Hollywood's economy.
I feel really good about Hollywood. It's on the move. The investments keep coming.
Hollywood continues a renaissance that started a few years back when it comes to economic development, movie production, and safer streets. Hundreds of business and entertainment people came to hear just how well it's doing.
Oh, I think Hollywood is a big draw right now, and it speaks volumes to our community and to people that are supporting the community when you have people like Netflix moving in and Viacom and Fender Guitar. These are staples for any business community.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell shared some of the moves the city is making to improve Hollywood's health. Renewed efforts by the LAPD to reduce crime are working. Last year, there were two homicides here compared to double-digit numbers in previous years. City leaders are planting trees, creating streetscapes, and sprucing up sidewalks and medians, and they have streamlined the permit process for businesses.
In Los Angeles, three-quarters of all employees work at what is classified as a small business. City Hall will now play a supportive role for businesses that are of value to the neighborhood. Folks, this is a real achievement, and it's going to help our economy.
And of course, Tinseltown's prized movie and TV industry is also picking up steam, with more production staying in town and production studios working at capacity.
Hollywood is a proxy for the whole city, if not the whole world, because it's the most famous neighborhood in the world. And when we do well in Hollywood, we generally do well across the city because there's just so much attention here in relation to the economy and jobs, walkability, livability, and safety.
And as Hollywood's star grows brighter, it means more business opportunities for everyone who works, lives, and plays here. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell is also celebrating the first homeless housing development to break ground in his district, which was funded by Prop HHH money. Voters approved that measure in 2016. Do you consider giving money to people living on the street but aren't quite sure how to do it? Well, now there's a solution, and all you have to do is feed the meter. Gil Reyes has more from Grand Park. Gil.
Yes, Yana, say you want to donate to the homeless. Many of us want to, especially when people approach, but you also want to make sure that the money you give will be put to good use. L.A. city and county leaders say this is one way to do it: new money meters. Two of them are already up in downtown, and more are on the way.
There you go.
Downtown's councilman Jose Wezar deposits coins in the first of two Orange Homeless Donation Meters in Grand Park. This meter is next to the children's play area. April McDonald, here with her son, feels safer contributing this way rather than handing a stranger money.
It's a good way to make sure that people's donations are used responsibly and are allocated to where they want it to go.
Dimes, quarters, any change you can spare goes to a group called C-3. They conduct homeless outreach on Skid Row, connecting people with mental health and substance abuse services.
It's a way simplistically to give, and it's not hard, and I think it will move people's hearts. In fact, my vision is to hopefully see these meters throughout the county.
Supervisor Hilda Solis mentions Grand Park's other meter across from the fountain. The devices are paid for by sponsorships. Sponsoring puts your name on them. And with more machines coming, local leaders expect to raise $43,000 a year on sponsorships alone.
In the future, we would like to do is do what Pasadena does. Pasadena matches whatever they raise with some philanthropic organization, and that allows them to multiply the revenue they receive.
In downtown, we'll also have meters at El Pueblo Historic Monument, St. Vincent Jewelry Center, the Alexandria Hotel, and the Hayward Manor Apartments. The meters also take credit cards, and big contributions are tax deductible. In Grand Park, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Local leaders hope to have 12 homeless donation meters in place by the end of the year. How resilient would L.A. be in a mega disaster? It was one of the issues city leaders and disaster experts took on as they held their first annual Future of Resilience event. Anna Marcos explains what it's all about.
The recent wildfires and mudslides in L.A. and Southern California brought home the point that it's crucial for Southern California to be prepared and resilient in a major natural disaster. That was the message at this first-ever Future of Resilience event.
Because people kind of say, well, nobody knows when the earthquake's going to come, but we actually do know this will happen. So this is a combination of what we plan to do, but we hope we never have to.
Dr. Lucy Jones, who once worked for the U.S. Geological Survey, got hooked on what she calls "science you can use" when she helped Mayor Eric Garcetti design L.A.'s master seismic plan, Resilience by Design. She now runs her own center to help spread this usable science.
We got to create this program that really got the science used, that led to the first shakeout, that led to me going to City Hall. What began in Los Angeles is spreading on forward.
Garcetti says city leaders are now working on technology that will sound an earthquake alert, allowing time to stop trains and critical hospital procedures safely before a disaster strikes. But he says residents should also be working and preparing for mass emergencies on their own.
What happens when it all shuts down? Where are you all going to meet? Have that plan with your family. Have that plan in your community.
L.A. is now part of an international partnership called 100 Resilient Cities, because staying one step ahead of disaster is a global effort. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
By the way, Dr. Jones's new center is called the Dr. Lucy Jones Center for Science and Society. Well, the mayor calls it the crown jewel and plans to restore the L.A. River, but what amenities would you like to see in the Taylor Yard River Project? As Gil Reyes reports, local residents weighed in during a rare tour of the area.
So the site was previously owned by Union Pacific, and it's been a rail yard for 80 or so years. So some of the community members have never been on site because it was privately owned. And so that's another reason that today is so exciting. We're bringing community members to really explore the site for the first time.
Residents along the L.A. River got a rare glimpse of the Taylor Yard River Project, also known as the G2 parcel in Glissell Park. Forty-one acres, sandwiched between the water and Rio de los Angeles State Park. The city bought the land last year, the big enchilada, in plans to restore 11 miles of the river to a more natural state. The goal is to turn what was part of Taylor Yard into a vast, public green space. Daniel Edelman favors keeping some of the old structures in place.
Lots of nice features from the rail yard built in, you know, because there's lots of beautiful old concrete shapes and stuff that would make for an interesting space to play and just hang out.
Expect a bikeway pedestrian bridge linking the east and west side of the river.
We could unite Glossop Park, Cypress Park, Atwater, Elysian Valley, and Silver Lake. We could all be united. We could have community events, an American Legion. I'm excited for a new skate park for the kids to come to, a plaza where we could have performances inside and in the summer outside. I would like a big, old community tree lighting event because I feel that this land is going to unite us all.
All suggestions being considered. Along the L.A. River, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
All 40-plus acres of G2 won't open to the public for at least a few more years. As a former rail yard site, portions of it are still contaminated and need to be thoroughly cleaned. While the city speeds up efforts to house people living on the street, the intersection of a deadly accident in Pacoima gets much-needed safety upgrades, and a new mural at Pershing Square highlights the beauty of Los Angeles. All these stories in City B. A Los Angeles City Council Committee moved forward with two proposals aimed at speeding up the creation of housing for people who are homeless. The council's Planning and Land Use Management Committee action came despite objections that the proposals could lead to a saturation of the housing projects in some areas, impact the property values of nearby homeowners, or cut the public out of having a voice in local zoning decisions. The proposals are in response to a 20% spike in the number of homeless in the city last year to more than 34,000 people. One proposal would aid the transition of some of the city's hotels or motels into temporary or supportive housing by easing some of the zoning requirements, while a second proposal would cut parking requirements and streamline the approval process for permanent supportive housing projects. City Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and the Pacoima community honored Saul Lopez, a local teen who died in 2016 in a tragic accident while riding his bike at the intersection of Glen Oaks Boulevard and Vaughn Street. Rodriguez dedicated the intersection as Saul Lopez Square. In addition to the signed dedication, a number of traffic safety measures were installed, including upgraded high-visibility crosswalks, a left-turn signal at northbound Glen Oaks Boulevard at Vaughn Street, right arrow yield to pedestrian signage, and other street safety improvements. Officials say these new measures will enhance the visibility of pedestrians and cyclists in the intersection and reinforce their right of way.
Saul's death really shook our community deeply, and the reflection of the turnout that we have here today from his friends and teachers, from Vaughn Charter School, his family, is a reflection of the deep, deep community roots that we have here and the commitment that we all have to make sure that our kids are safe.
Pershing Square's most recent mural installation is completed and on display on the corner of Fifth and Olive. In collaboration with the City of Los Angeles Department of Wreckin' Parks, artist David Mitchell Lee was commissioned to design and paint a mural reflective of the wonders of L.A. Lee, an accomplished artist, worked diligently to depict many familiar sights around L.A., including the Hollywood sign. Iconic attributes such as palm trees interspersed in between skyscrapers amid a clear blue skyline provide the audience with staples of the city while confronting the possibility of interstellar travel. Lee's mural will be on display through June 2018. It was a night of celebrities at City Hall, all making a serious pitch for truth, free speech, and a free press. So how does the cast of The West Wing, the story of all the president's men, and our current president all fit together? Anna Marcos explains.
The Post has maliciously sought to give the appearance of a direct connection between the White House and Watergate, a charge which the Post knows to be false.
That was just before the biggest political corruption scandal in U.S. history broke during the Nixon era in the '70s, as Washington Post reporters Bill Woodward and Carl Bernstein cracked the Nixon case wide open.
Your short, deep throat won't confirm.
He won't confirm.
And now the Watergate story comes alive for one night at City Hall, as the former cast of the TV show The West Wing reads from the screenplay All the President's Men. Organizers say the times we're living in call for it. They draw similarities between our current president's war on the media and then-President Richard Nixon's anti-media views.
The Trump administration's war on the First Amendment include repeated degradation of the role of media in our society and repeated invocations of fake news when the absolute truth does not suit him. We are leading the resistance. All of us gathered here tonight, we are part and parcel of that resistance. Congratulations.
A free press is crucial to a free society.
Well, there's often shredding. We do that a lot.
The evening was put on by the Fountain Theater, a Hollywood landmark known for its cutting-edge plays, and the Society for Professional Journalists, with help from Councilmember Mitchell Farrell's office.
And we at the Fountain Theater believe that we tell truths and change lives with our art.
I thought it was the most socially relevant piece that I've seen in many years.
It was a real cheer, celebrating the press, the freedom of the press, and the work of reporters in finding truth.
And because two reporters dug out the story which led to President Nixon resigning, we now have a historic lesson of power and corruption at the highest levels, one that would never have come out without a free press and freedom of speech. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Among the cast members who took part in the reading were Ed Begley Jr., Joshua Malina, Joe Morton, Jeff Perry, Richard Schiff, and Bradley Whitford. Well, check out some impactful photos that played an important role in civil rights. Puppets come to life during Bob Baker Day and take part in the annual Firecracker Run to benefit the local community. All this and this week's Things to Do. This African-American Heritage exhibit examines the vital role that visual imagery played in the fight for racial and social equality from the 1940s through the 1970s. For All the World to See traces the emergence of attempts by some African-Americans to present a more nuanced and accurate picture of African-American life, relying on the power of the camera. The exhibit shows how popular images, sometimes disturbing, sometimes entertaining, and sometimes overtly militant, played a crucial part in promoting important ideas about fairness and advancing civil rights during a key period in America's history. The exhibit runs until March 16 at the Los Angeles Central Library. You are cordially invited to Bob Baker Day 2018, the fourth annual celebration of Bob Baker's ongoing legacy. Let the puppets and the people of Bob Baker Marionette Theater entertain you with sights and sounds of a celebration you'll never forget. The place where imagination dwells spills onto West First Street as a whimsical carnival, sponsored by City Council District 1. Enjoy your favorites among an all-day outdoor stage with live music and entertainment, puppet-making workshops with the Los Angeles Guild of Puppetry, carnival midway games, educational and exhibition booths from the local art community, food trucks, walk-around entertainment, and more. With round-the-clock puppet shows and a pop-up puppet museum going on inside the theater, this is one celebration not to be missed. It all takes place Saturday, February 24 from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 1345 West First Street. It's the Year of the Dog. The L.A. Chinatown Firecracker Run's annual event brings family and friends to participate in the festivities. The run includes bike rides, a 5K and 10K run walk, and a kiddie run. The event will also include a lighting of the fireworks ceremony, admission to the Firecracker Festival, carnival games, and petting zoo for kiddie run participants. All proceeds and donations go to local elementary schools and nonprofit community organizations providing service and programs to benefit the community. It all takes place February 24 and 25 in Chinatown Central Plaza. For more, visit firecracker10k.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
Okay, if everyone would please take their seats. Everyone, please take their seats. Today is Wednesday, February 21st. Want to welcome you to City Hall, to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonner, Buscaino, Sedia, Angler, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretz, Correa, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. O'Farrell seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Englander moves. Buscaino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, Department of Building and Safety recommends that Items 1J and 1L be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full, and that Item 1N be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been rescinded by the department. The department further requests that Item 1M be continued, that's M as in Mary, be continued to March 23rd. And there is a request to continue Item 22 to this Friday, February 23rd.
Okay, then, without objection, so ordered. Mr. Clerk, my notes say 1N. It's 1M?
M is to be continued, and N, as in Nancy, is to be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been rescinded.
Gotcha. All right. So let's move on.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 10 are items noticed for public hearing. A committee report for Item 9 has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items.
Okay, continue.
Items 11 through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, let's prepare to vote on Mr. Rue.
Special.
12 for Mr. Rue. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will be continued, or not continued, be held over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Okay, thank you. We should get there.
Items 21 through 22 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. Cards on Item 21, 22 was continued.
Okay, then, continue.
Very good, sir. Items 23 through 26 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
At this point, yes. I think that's a good recommendation. Please, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay. Can we pull up general public comment? Okay, I'm going to take a couple of general public comment cards. Rafael Leon, Maria Manzarigos, Pablo, Dr. Pablo Orsino, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Rafael Leon, and I live in the city of Hawthorne. Members of the L.A. for Fair B&amp;B Coalition is interested to protect affordable housing amidst the most worst housing crisis in L.A. of Los Angeles has been ever seen. Policy to regulate short-term rentals was introduced on June 2nd, 2015. Since then, we have lost 4,829 units. I've been trying to look for us to rent a bigger apartment for the past six months, and I haven't been able because of this. Every day, we lose 4.9 units, and every month, we lose 147 units. We ask you, please, to pass the policy as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Maria Masarigos, and I live in Hawthorne. I unpack this problem with my family because my sister live in Arizona, and she come to move with the L.A., and she have to leave with me for one year because it's very difficult to rent other place. We lost 4,829 residents in L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And I want Harriet Elliott, Dave DePinto, and Maria Yamas. Yes.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Pablo Sorio. I'm a proud principal of 135th Elementary School in Local District South. I'm here joining a group of very concerned citizens from the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council just to bring to your attention the ongoing issues around traffic around our schools. We look forward to partnering with school organizations to be able to address, again, the ongoing concerns around traffic around our schools. There's ongoing traffic accidents along with students getting injured. So once again, I look forward to partnering with anyone here from the city to address those issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Can you direct him to the side, Mr. President? Just direct him to the...
My name is Harriet Elliott.
Uh, Doctor, could you come over to my left side?
Yeah, we'd be more than happy, as a member of the Harbor Gateway community, to meet in the side. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. My name is Harriet Elliott. I'm in Wesson's district. I'm here today because my son's deceased son, 25 years ago, the autopsy miraculously changed. There was a page missing for 23 years. Can you believe that? It's so obvious that it's missing. The reason why it's so obvious is the death investigation that the city attorney Fuhrer, his deputy Lyndon Newen, sent me. Oh, as if all of the death investigation, everyone sent it. Was Detective Johnson telling me that your son's killer was from the outside of the party? It wasn't from the outside, it was from the inside. All these years, they hid it. And here's Detective Stinker's statement. Someone argued with my son, invited him outside, and then shot him. All these years. Can I give this?
Thank you. Yes, Sergeant, could you get that from... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Dave? And again, Maria James or Yamey, please come forward. They will. They will, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm Dave DePinto. I'm involved with the Safe Coalition, fighting the high-speed train project in the northeast San Fernando Valley. I'm here to request that all of the city council work together as this high-speed train project cuts through council districts 2, 6, and 7, impacting easily half a million people. I'd ask we remember, it's a train, 220 miles per hour, every five minutes, 200 trains a day. There's a motion in the Transportation Committee. We'd love to see that motion amended and passed so that it supports all of the council districts. We have a community meeting tomorrow night on this topic. You're all invited, and we hope to send a clear message that the city of Los Angeles backs its residents. President Wesson, councilmembers, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dave. Good to see you. Yes, ma'am. Maria?
Yeah, that's my mom.
Go ahead. Okay, let's get translator. One moment.
Tengo... Mi nombre es Maria Jaimez.
My name is Maria Jaimez.
Estoy aquí porque tengo que pagar esta deuda.
I'm here because I have to pay this debt.
Y no fue por algo que no puedo o no quiero, solo que mi situación económica...
This is in reference to 1E. I am here because my financial situation is not good.
El año pasado, he estado enferma.
Last year, I was sick.
Me dio un derrame cerebral.
I suffered a stroke.
Y obtuve otra cirugía hace seis semanas.
And six weeks ago, I underwent a surgery.
And I'm still going, recovering.
I'm still recovering.
Con el derrame?
From the stroke.
A veces me olvidan mis cosas.
Sometimes I forget things.
Confundo las palabras.
I confuse with words.
So esto me causa emocionalmente porque sé que mi parte financiera no está bien.
This is causing me a lot of emotional hardship, and I know that my financial status is not doing well.
So me gustaría que me pudieran ayudar de alguna manera para tratar de poder lo más que pueda.
So I would like to find someone to help me so I can resolve this as much as possible.
Y también, en mi ciudad donde yo vivo, siento que hay mucha discriminación en este aspecto.
In the city that I live also, I feel that there is a lot of discrimination in these regards.
Sobre la propiedad, que me dieron una munta.
Because they gave me a fine regarding my property.
El vecino al lado mío tiene un garage.
My next-door neighbor has a garage.
Con una recámara.
With one bedroom, a bedroom.
Sala.
Bath.
Y cocina.
Dining room and kitchen.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino, I believe this is in your district. I would suggest maybe we continue this item for 30 days. Allow her the opportunity to speak with members of your staff to see if we can give her some relief. So if that's acceptable to you, if you could explain to Maria that this item will be continued until March 23rd, and that if she goes over to my left, we'll introduce her to a member of Mr. Buscaino's staff, and they'll try to see what, if anything, can be done. Mr. Englander? In fact, Mr. Weezer. In fact, no, Mr. Englander, Mr. Englander.
I'm sorry, yes, real quick. Mr. President, if we can reconsider Item 13, I'd like to send that one back to committee for some technical changes.
Okay, let's pull up Item 13. We're going to vote on... Mr. Corretz?
I just wanted to point out, not requesting any particular action other than instruction to behave, that Mr. Herman was snorting disruptively throughout the testimony of the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Herman, don't disrupt this meeting, please. Consider yourself warned. So, on item, what item again? 13? Let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
14 ayes.
Okay, and the request is that it be sent back to committee without objection. So ordered. Mr. Weezer, are you ready with your presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues. We all have some great community activists in our communities and great leaders who do so much for our communities. And in El Cerrano, we have someone who has not only done a lot to save youth, to serve youth, to serve the community, but also leads an organization that is helping our youth in the area. We have with us today Tammy Membreño. She is the Executive Director for Barrio Action Youth and Family Center. When my staff and I were talking about how we could continue to improve the community of El Cerrano, we came up with the name of Tammy Membreño about someone who's doing a lot and is a great partner with us. She is someone who brings great skill, determination, and passion to every effort that she champions. And she has been the Executive Director for over 26 years, and hopefully, a lot more. El Cerrano and my district would not be what it is today without the outstanding contributions and services of this wonderful woman standing next to me. Her dedication throughout the years has been something to behold, and we thank her for all she has done to empower young people to find success, whether that's academically, socially, in their family dynamic, or in their communities. When I look at the options that many of our young people have, it's places like Barrio Action that provides our young people with a positive place to be, positive role models, and also some paths for a different career alternatives. And one of the persons that they see at that organization each and every day is Tammy. And Tammy has become a role model for many of our young people there, and many of them see themselves in her one day and see what's possible. Tammy was born in El Salvador and came to Los Angeles when she was just 10 years old. She went to Virgil Junior High School and graduated from Belmont High School and attended Cal State L.A. And during her college years, Tammy had a work-study grant that offered her the opportunity to work either on campus or in the community. And fortunately for El Cerrano, she chose to work in the community. In 1977, at the start of Barrio Action, she began working there alongside the founder, Sister Emanuel Baragan, someone Tammy had met years earlier as a catechism teacher. After graduation, she remained a volunteer for many years, eventually becoming a board member for Barrio Action before accepting the executive director position in 1991. Under Tammy's leadership, Barrio Action has grown from a staff of three to more than 23, and some of them are here today. Let's give them all a big round of applause for their work. Thank you so much. The agency's programs have significantly expanded with the goal of improving the quality of life for the youth and families they serve. And Barrio Action has programs to encourage our youth to stay in school, assist dropouts to return to school, provides development aid, and other programs to assist our at-risk and high-risk youth, including our foster care youth and their families. Beyond the great programs, Barrio Action hosts events that bring our community together, such as our annual Thanksgiving Dinner in El Cerrano, which provides free meals to hundreds of residents. My office shares the El Cerrano Constituent Center with Barrio Action, and we have built a great relationship and partnership. So we thank not only Tammy, but also Barrio Action for the great work they do. Tammy's work for many years in Barrio Action and in various community events will have a lasting impact in El Cerrano. And that's why, when my office and I spoke, we wanted to not only acknowledge her and thank her, as we do each and every day, but also to bring her before the council to have a recognition to Tammy for her unselfishness, her dedication, and contributions. And many times, a lot of those good works go unnoticed. You know, it's not about getting the attention or people knowing about it, it's just the good work that you do and the caring that you do for the community. So we thank you very much on behalf of Council District 14 and the City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much, Tammy.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Mr. Weezer, I'd like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Weezer, thank you so much for bringing in Tammy. You know, Tammy's a good friend, and I'm very familiar with the work that she's been doing in serving the youth of the other northeast and, you know, El Cerrano. And, you know, well-deserved recognition for all of your commitment to serving the youth in the city of Los Angeles. So kudos to you. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for bringing her in today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. And now, ladies and gentlemen, Tammy Membreño, please give her a big round of applause, thank you.
Thank you and good morning, thank you, Mr. Weezer. It is sort of odd to receive recognition for doing the love, the work that you love to do, but this twenty-six year would have been possible, having not been for the support of my family, my friends, my colleagues, community members, board members, or especially staff. You know, staff is always the backbone of any organization. And as you lead them, you want to make sure that they have the mission of where their heart is, as well as the mission of your organization. And we have been very fortunate to have great staff, present and past. So to my staff, thank you so much for being the backbone of our community and in our center. And I would be remiss not to say that I hope that in the last twenty-six years I have honored the legacy of our founder, Sister Emanuel Baragan, and we'll continue to do that in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you, Tammy, for your work. And we all know how important the work is to assure our young people in the city that they have options, they have alternatives. And it's organizations like Barrio Action and people like Tammy who have saved thousands of lives and allowed our young people to pursue their God-given potential and achieve what they can. But many of the times, without organizations like this, we don't do that. So I wanted to thank you because we have saved thousands of lives, thank you so much.
Thank you, one more round of applause. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, why don't we take up item nine at this point?
And, Mr. President, again, a Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee report has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, it's my understanding that item nine requests the city council adopt four ordinances approving resolutions of necessity to authorize commencement of eminent domain proceedings in order to acquire four properties. So I would, unless you tell me differently, we will proceed as it follows. I'd like to request that we have a presentation from staff, if I could get Ms. Bowers... If I could get Ms. Bowers to come forward. Members after staff, any questions from the council, we can direct to her. And following questions to staff, each of the property owners, if they're here, will be afforded an opportunity to speak, and again, members, feel free to ask questions yourself. At this point, I'd like to defer to Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. This item is a hearing to determine whether the council wishes to adopt four ordinances approving resolutions of necessity to authorize commencement of eminent domain proceedings to acquire four properties located in Los Angeles, California. These ordinances do not address in any way the compensation to be paid for the taking of the properties, nor does the adoption of ordinances prevent the parties from continuing to negotiate. It is always possible that a settlement may be reached without a trial or significant litigation on these acquisitions, and that is always our hope. But in this case, for the reasons explained in the staff report and the presentation, we are asking that the council approve the ordinances so that staff may move forward with the next legal step in the condemnation process, which is the authorization to bring eminent domain actions to condemn the properties. At the close of this hearing, you will be asked to make a few key findings that described in the CAO report and the proposed ordinances. Adopting these ordinances requires an affirmative two-thirds vote of the council. The council file and the presentation you are about to hear will give you the facts necessary to support the necessary findings. The presentation, council file, and all its reference documents will become part of the record of these proceedings. If there are any additional exhibits or other information presented to the council this morning, they will be added to the record. If you have questions about the facts, do not hesitate to ask me. If you have legal questions about the findings, please ask our legal counsel, David Grayler, with Nossman Law Firm. The first two findings, the public interest or necessity requiring the project and the project being planned or located is for the greatest public good and the least private injury, are applicable to the entire project and not solely, or even necessarily, to the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of specific properties needed for this project. The remaining findings, for example, that the properties being acquired are necessary for the project, that offers have been made to the owners of the properties as required by law, and that requisite environmental reviews have been completed, apply to the specific parcels at issue. The project requiring acquisition of these properties is the Landside Access Modernization Program, known as LAMP, in which the city will be constructing an automated people mover to provide passenger connections from a consolidated rental car facility and two new intermodal transit facilities to the Los Angeles International Airport central terminal area. Under LAMP, property acquisitions via eminent domain are only pursued as a last resort after voluntary acquisition measures have been pursued. One of the findings the council is being asked to make as to a portion of the Korsani property, APN 4125026801, is that it would be rendered an uneconomic remnant under Code of Silver Procedure Section 1240.410, were it not required for the project. All other requested individual findings are common for the four property acquisitions. One property is owned by the Los Angeles Unified School District, but the council is being asked to find as to all four property acquisitions that to the extent the property or a portion of the property is already devoted to a public use under Code of Silver Procedure Section 1240.610 and 1250.510, the use to which each property is to be acquired via eminent domain is a more necessary public use than the use to which each property is already devoted, or an alternative, is a compatible public use which will not unreasonably interfere with or impair the continuance of the public use to which each property is or may already be devoted. Written offers and accompanying appraisal summaries were previously sent to the property owners, and despite efforts to negotiate, no agreement for the sales of the properties could be reached. Notice of this hearing was sent by first-class mail to the property owners on February 6, 2018. This concludes my presentation. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the council members that the adoption of the ordinances requires an affirmative two-thirds vote of the council.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, well, first off, do the council members have any questions? If not, I'm gonna ask, I believe that there are no property owners in the audience today who wish to speak. Is that correct? Yes, all right, in that case, we can move on to public comments.
Okay, so I'd like to get Mr. Herman and Mr. Previn one minute.
What do we have to hide from? What are we hiding from when we use eminent domain at a time when public transportation has failed to produce? Why should we accommodate anyone at LAX over this bullshit proposition to expand public transportation? We need housing. Let's improve housing for the people that live in that abandoned area for years, decades. Otherwise, as my appearance points out, there is no transparency under the cover of City of Los Angeles. It's a falsy, racketeering, bullshit, diaper assholes, shitholes, pure motherfuckers who fuck up your communities and fuck up the City of Los Angeles. On behalf of public interest, fuck you!
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, Hazar Bedian would be, he's the lawyer for LAUSD. They would do a better job of speaking up on this, but there was the 38,000 square foot improvements that had been made, and evidently, there's a negotiation ongoing, so this is very aggressive. And, you know, sometimes we have to be aggressive to accomplish what we need, but are we compensating them fairly is a question the public always wants to know. I mean, I, Mr. Sadio certainly is coughing, but I hope that he's okay, and I hope that we can find a balance so that we can get the people mover that's been promised for so long rolling, so that people can get to the airport in a safe and appropriate manner. And thank you for all of your support.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, are there no questions from the council? Okay, then we can proceed, so let us vote on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Mr. Rue, item twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and colleagues. We have us before us today an ordinance that will protect the public safety and uphold the quality of life. Today, we have a party house ordinance that will empower the LAPD and the city attorney to both fine both the party hosts and property owners for diminishing and disregarding the peace and safety of their neighbors. This is a sorely needed and long overdue. The issue of professional all-night parties with hundreds of people winding their way through residential hillside neighborhoods has been something I've been hearing about ever since my run for office. The motion I introduced in this very chamber in June of 2016 to rein in party houses was not just because these party houses are nuisances or noisy, but because they are a threat to public safety. Let me be clear about what we're talking about here. These are not barbecues or family gatherings. These are large events, flyer parties, often with the cover charge, that bring hundreds of people, most importantly, that are creating a massive public safety hazard and abusing the time and resources of our first responders who have to come and break up these parties time and time again. Parties that block streets with lions and giraffes, and property owners that own sometimes two, three, or four properties with the sole purposes of renting them out for house parties. Neighbors have had to dealt with this night after night after night of impossibly loud parties that go till dawn. They have tried every other avenue to address these party houses, and nothing has worked. That's why today's ordinance is so important. For the first time, the city can fine both the party host and the homeowner up to $8,000. So whether you rent it out or personally throw out-of-control parties, you are responsible. Colleagues, let's put public safety first before party houses, and I encourage an "aye" vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
And I wanted to thank Mr. Rue for bringing this forward. I think both his district and my district have this problem and have fought this problem for years. We've tried literally everything else that could be tried without success, so I would ask my colleagues to support this very timely and overdue piece of legislation, and we would hope this helps us get a handle on a problem we've been facing for many years. So thank you again for bringing this forward, I think this is a great solution.
Thank you, okay, Mr. Sadio.
My younger staff suggest that I won't know. But I want to commend my colleague. There was a question about the First Amendment, about people's rights, but there's also the limits for which we're responsible to engage in this. And we're talking about activity that goes and exceeds those limits. We have a similar phenomenon in our district. We are becoming the zero rave and zero tolerance for the rave parties. Because again, on one hand, you can argue, what are the limits and parameters of the First Amendment? The rights of people to gather, to enjoy themselves. And then the duties and responsibilities of government to make a reasonable limit on those activities, whether it's a complete disruption of the life of a community or whether it results in death of young people, which is a common occurrence, a too-common occurrence at these raves or electronic music activities. And so, I want to commend my colleague because this is the right balance and the appropriate measure for a limit on the First Amendment. So I would concur and ask for an "aye" vote.
Thank you, okay. Madam Clerk, on this item, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr... Mr. Kokorian. So let's go to multi... Mr. Kokorian? If you could guide us through the closed session items?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Items 23, 24, 25 are all matters that have been heard in open session... I'm sorry, have been heard by Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations, and those matters can be heard in open session. Those are all routine settlements. Item 26 is also a matter that's been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations, and that also can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Mr. Englander?
Can we vote on 25 separately, please?
Okay, we can do that. So, Mr. City Attorney, why don't you... Let's do all of the items except for 25, we'll do that separately, so if you could read them. Or, Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry.
Very good, sir. For item 23, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Silmar Foothill LLC, there is a recommendation to expend $18.3 million in settlement. For item 24, in the case entitled Nia Liel et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $300,000 in settlement. For item...
For item 26, as Mr. Kokorian said, it's a recommendation to accept the city attorney's recommendation. There is no final action for the purposes of the Brown Act that would require a report out.
Okay, let's prepare then to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, now let's do 25, I believe, separately?
Yes, sir. In the case entitled Donald Leese versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $400,000 in settlement.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
Thank you. So I'd like to call up Ms. McAllister. Ms. McAllister, you have two minutes, and then your general public comment minute. You have item 1A and item 10, and then general public comment.
Based on my observations for these homes that are getting leased, I have discovered that the city, with Mayor Garcetti and his council, are purposely putting Americans out of their homes and selling these homes cheap to illegal aliens. One came in here today, says she couldn't pay, you want to give her a break. I've seen black people come in here and white, and you didn't give them any breaks. A Mexican came in here yesterday about his home. He couldn't even speak, they gave him a break, told him to go to the side. Illegal aliens should not be owning homes in California and this country. We need a federal investigation here in California, especially in Los Angeles, San Francisco, all over, all of these illegals. When you hear on the news that 35 to 40 illegals are living in homes, one home, that means that the city is selling those homes to illegal aliens. Illegal aliens have no right to buy housing in this country, no right whatsoever, that's number one. Number 10, here you're talking about the rights of illegals, you want, excuse me, number 10 is about this $28 million you want to spend to acquire and construct the Washington View Apartments at... to acquire and construct the Washington View Apartments at 720 West Washington Boulevard. I went online and investigated this area. It's a poor, high-crime area filled with illegal aliens, Hispanics and Latinos and a few Asians. No blacks, very few. We shouldn't be spending and building housing for illegal aliens. We need to put a stop on that until President Trump and we get an investigation in here to get people off Skid Row, my people, black people off Skid Row, and the other 3, 4 million homeless we have in California. We cannot depend on Lhasa. Lhasa only counts the people on the street and in shelters. There are millions in their cars, living with family and friends. So, we must remember that that's an extra 1 to 2 million. I totally disagree with us and the policy that this city council gives to illegal aliens. They're going to be your voters? No, they won't. If they vote, they go into prison.
Now, you go into your general public comment.
Now, my general public comment, I want to comment on number 20 here, where it says that you want to give illegal aliens the right to have, to vote and things of that nature. I say "to vote" because you're saying that you want them to have civil rights and human rights. They don't have any civil rights and human rights in this country. Go back to Mexico, wherever they came from, they have all the rights there. You're taking our rights, American citizens, and giving them to illegal aliens. Also, people are coming in here every week saying that this affordable housing, they're losing rent-controlled housing by the thousand. You guys haven't set up not one committee to try to save this, this housing. They, one came in here today, said they lost a thousand, last week, thousands, thousands. These are rent-controlled apartments that they're losing. Landlords are tearing down buildings, building more expensive ones, and they're kicking out the low-income people. What have you done? Let's start a committee now!
All right, Herman?
With all considerations and hoods down, we continue to offer $50,000 for a human life. In what regard do we have compassion, heart, and love for people who are killed, for families who are destroyed over the constant deaths in Los Angeles? Well, we need to stop bringing tourism to Los Angeles until it's safe. We don't have a chief of police to protect us anymore. You're not safe in Los Angeles. As of Angel Marcial, sounds like a Hispanic name, was murdered on October 29, 2017. And already, in 2018, the rate of deaths are going up at an alarming time when we have AR-15s out on the street by police acting as a military militia gunning down civilian Americans. And in my further action on items closed, I want to meet the idea of what Ms. McAllister said for the record. Why are we giving illegal immigrants the right to process? Litigation shouldn't be spent on illegal immigrants. When I go to your fucked-up country, no one gives me the right to defend America. I go to jail. So, as long as there's the idea of equality on item 22, I believe, or 20, whatever the fuck number that is for equality of immigration, fuck you and fuck your immigration, you stupid wet-back motherfuckers. Now, my general public comment. Regarding community meetings, the city will be hiring a new chief of police. The police commissioners invite all to attend public hearings. Tuesday, February 13, Wilmington; Thursday, February 15, Magnolium Mandarin School; Saturday, February 17, in Van Nuys, where Nuri Martinez works. And today at 1:00, in the Permit Police Review, we're going to talk about the prostitution at 15004 for women and men having sex in a restaurant doing business as a experiment rhino. I invite you at 1:00 to the Police Commission Building across the street from City Hall. In addition, Edwin Markham Middle School School, Montecito Heights Senior Center, and West L.A. Municipal Building. We're going to finally hire a non-white motherfucking policeman who needs a job. Fuck you!
Mr. Previn, items 1, 2, 3, 8, and 21.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, CD2. Item 1, it was, it was heartbreaking to, to hear that woman describe her situation from Mr. Bustainos' district, and I know that there are now several instances where people are being treated in this way that is just, it's astonishing because it's, they're, these are people who have tried to remedy these situations, make good, and they're just being hammered with these endless fees. Now, when you jump to the idea of eminent domain, it's a different kind of a story. And I think everybody in the city of Los Angeles' eyes popped out collectively when we saw $18.3 million for that item number 26. And, you know, another, yeah, I'm moving on.
Mr. President, we've already voted on item 26, and, and the hearing was held a committee.
Please stick to your item. This will be your fair and final warning on 1, 2, 3, 8, and 21, Mr. Previn.
And this is your fair and final warning too, sir. I just wanted to say that the, no, I just want to mention one thing, which is that the contractual matter that we are dealing with in the other item that's closed session, you need to identify it by contract number.
Again, Mr. Previn is talking about the closed session items.
All right, let's go ahead and start at one minute for general public comment, then.
Well, that's an inappropriate move, but Mr. Rue is certainly gung-ho for the enforcement against parties, and a lot of people are fighting against that, and we appreciate it. But yesterday, up in the Ethics Commission, he produced a little recommendation for six times the matching funds. But Mr. Kokorian took $44,000 in matching funds, but didn't meet the matching, the requirement to have a debate with your challenger. And so, when Rue makes that proposal, and Glibly also tries to prevent developers from contributing to campaigns, but takes lots of money from Jamison, who's in partnership with Mr. Hanke, who is a developer, they're, they're developers, and it's not appropriate to hide over there with Ms. Rodriguez looking at her phone during this time. It's more appropriate to step forward and give that money back because Jamison doesn't need to influence you, sir. And you can't go around saying you're not taking money from developers while taking a lot of money from Jamison. And so, Mr. Englander, you take a lot of money from everybody.
All right, thank you very much. Your time is up. Mr. Herman, you've already been warned that there aren't clapping. So, one more outbreak from you, and you'll, you'll be dismissed from the chambers. Mr. Johnson, or is it Johnson? The first name is Johnson? Okay, probably already gone. We'll go ahead and file that. Spencer? Okay, next speaker? Okay, that's it. That concludes all the speakers. Next item?
Mr. President, item 11 is an ordinance that was adopted with 10 members. It should be reconsidered now for 12.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, and that's going to then require another votes. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 2 through 8, and 10, and 21. 2 through 8, 10, and 21.
Okay, members, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved?
Mr. President, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to continue items 1A and 1B 30 days to March 23rd. Again, A and B to March 23rd.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection?
Very good, sir. That leaves the balance of item number 1, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and take that up now. Okay, we'll go ta, go ahead, members, and we'll take the item, the balance on item number 1. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved, and council's got motions for posting and referral. We'll go ahead and post and refer those. And colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none. We have adjourning motions. If we can get everybody in the chambers to please rise, including members of the public, if we can have everyone please rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would like to adjourn in the memory of my dear friend Diane Han, who passed away on Friday, February 16th. Diane lived in the community of Arlita for nearly 44 years, having immigrated from New Zealand in 1971. Diane served tirelessly as a volunteer for the Arlita community. She attended every single meeting that had to do with our neighborhood, whether she was at the Arlita Neighborhood Council, the Arlita Lucky Lou's Neighborhood Watch, the Branford Park Neighborhood Watch, or LAPD Mission Area Community Police Advisory Board. You can always count on Diane being there. Diane carried, cared deeply about our first responders, and they cared about her. She called herself a liaison between Fire Station 7 and the community. When Fire Station 7 moved to its new location in 2015, Diane was instrumental in the city's decision of turning the old fire station building on Nordoff into the site of the Future Employee Assistance Program for firefighters dealing with issues like depression and other mental health issues as well. She took, she took the lead in raising and identifying funds for the Halomatchles Rescue Tool for local Fire Station 7. This lifesaving piece of equipment valued at more than $10,000 and is used to extricate people from their vehicles during Iraq. Diane was also the first person to volunteer to beautify her community, and I remember her driving around her old classic 1970 Datsun pickup truck, making sure that all of our volunteers were hydrated during cleanups. She was a firm believer of, in personal wellness. She would come to my Sun Valley office at least once a week to drop off fresh fruits and fresh pressed juices from our local farmer's market at Kaiser Permanente. When I first came into office, Diane approached me with an issue that was plaguing the Arlita community. This was the ongoing blight of vehicles that were being parked and being sold along Woodman Avenue. It was thanks to her advocacy and her work that I worked on the passage of the resolution to post signage restricting sales of vehicles along major thoroughfares in the community of Arlita. Every time there was a quality of life issue that was affecting Arlita and my district, Diane was there to share her insight, write letters, and to gather support. She was a mentor, a liaison between the community and my office. She always understood that there was a process to everything and never lost sight of what was best for our community. She was our guide to Arlita, whether she was providing us with locations of illegally placed clothing donation bins, telling us what streets needed to be resurfaced, what trees needed to be trimmed, or gathering toiletries for our annual Human Trafficking Awareness Month Drive. Diane was always there. Diane's selfless dedication to the community was indispensable. And thankful, thankful to her and for everything she ever did for my staff and myself. With that, I want to adjourn in her memory. Diane, it was an asset and a blessing to my office and to council's success, and she's going to truly be missed. Colleagues, it's been a tough year, 2018. We've lost some pretty phenomenal women, Linda Levitan not too long ago, about a month and a half ago, and now Diane. I know it's part of life, but Diane was a very, very special person to me and my family, and may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to, I'd like to add myself to this adjourning motion. Diane was a very special, kind woman who extended her service beyond the 6th District. She wasn't a, she was a friend and very active on the Community Police Advisory Board as well for mission. But she was just, she's one of those community leaders that was always so selfless of her time, always looking to be a really productive partner in working with us to help identify solutions that we could work collaboratively together. And just as she, you know, did so with the fire station, she was always just a really eager and willing partner to identify solutions so that we could work very well together. And she was just a very kind spirit, and it was heartbreaking to hear of her passing because I would always get those, you know, messages from her, just kind of alerting me to certain concerns that she might have in the community as well with, working with my staff, and she's going to be completely, she's going to be terribly missed. And so, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
And thank you for joining on the, the adjourning motion. She was very fond of you, very fond of your work, and was very, very proud when you became a city council. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio?
Yes, Ms. Tiana Alfred was born June 21, 1986 in Waipahu, Hawaii. She passed away recently tragically in Pasadena at the age of 31 on January 31st. She was raised in Hawaii in the San Fernando Valley until her family relocated permanently to Pasadena when she was 14 years old. Ms. Alfred graduated from Arcadia High School, Rancho Learning Center. She was the class valedictorian, went on to Mount SAC, and later received a degree in Business and Legal Studies from Pasadena City College. After college, Ms. Alfred assisted her family in the business, fast hauling and moving, before joining the marketing team at World Financial Group. She also worked as a legal assistant at a local law firm in Pasadena. She was a member and president of the Phi Alpha Delta Pre-Law Fraternity. Ms. Alfred will be remembered as a kind, trusting, studious, curious young woman, referred to herself as nerd girl. She was an avid reader and an advocate for early childhood education and literacy. She is survived by her son, mother, stepfather, grandparents, extended family, and friends who will miss her dearly. May she rest in peace.
Do we have any other adjourning motions? Okay, Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President and, and members. Back in 1991, I had the opportunity to manage Yvonne Burke's campaign for county supervisor. And I remember receiving a phone call, and, and someone asked, they said, "Well, well, Hervier, your family is cornering the market on doing campaigns. I see that your wife is the treasurer." I'm like, what? Somebody had misspelled the name of Yvonne's treasurer, so it said Jan Wesson. So, I had never met her before, and I was really looking forward to meeting her. I thought maybe she might be a, a member of, of my family, and then found out it was a typo. Her name was Jan Wasson. Now, Jan was a little bitty thing in great shape, and she looked like one of those teachers that we had in elementary school, the real strict, stern teacher, the somewhat frightening teacher. And she was not an easy person to get to know. I mean, she, I was the campaign manager, but I took my instructions from her. And it wasn't until I had to go pick up something from her house, which was located in Mr. Bonin's district, and she had a dog, a dog named Peppers. And the dog and I hit it off. From that moment on, Jan and I became the best of friends. She took her job very seriously. She dotted the i's, and she crossed the t's, and for many years, she was Yvonne's treasurer. Then, I got to a point where I decided that, that I was going to run for office, and Jan became my treasurer. And that's when our bond really began. She was a professional's professional. You could always count on her. And then, I remember her calling, saying that she and her husband were going to be moving to Sacramento. But she figured out a way that she could continue to be my treasurer. You know, when I'd have to sign things triple and double- You know, when I'd have to sign things triple and double, and when she was with me, there was never a question of any of the paperwork that I submitted. She... When I decided to run for the city council, she came down and met with the Ethics Commission people, Tristan and those folk, and literally got trained on how to be a treasurer for a councilperson or a council candidate, because she had not done that before. And within a matter of months, she became an expert in how we have to do our filings and reportings. And even though she lived in Sacramento, I was never late with a filing. If she had to literally take a package and put it on a plane to fly it down and then have me turn around and fly it back up, we would do that. She... For those of you that remember Jack Weiss, she was also Jack's treasurer, but I was, without a doubt, her favorite. I'm going to let that go, Mr. Herman. When she got sick a few years back, one of the things that bothered her the most was that she was going to eventually have to leave my service. We were more like family. It wasn't about a business arrangement. And it got to a point where she had all but lost her voice, and when I would speak with her, you could really not understand what she wanted, what she was trying to say. So she got Nancy Dolan and a couple of other folk, and they put together a team because she wanted to make sure that the last campaign that she was the treasurer for was mine. A lot of people said that I should have replaced her, but you cannot replace somebody that you love. You cannot replace family. And even though she could barely move around and speak and use her hands to do the computer, she still got the work done, and she got it done with class. And I was informed that she passed away this Friday. The battle that she had with her illness, it eventually won, and I just wanted to rise in front of this council and ask each and every one of you to join me in adjourning for a very great woman, a great Democrat. She might have looked hard as nails on the outside, but she was soft as a cushion on the inside. I am a better person because of my association with her, and I consider myself blessed. So I ask that we stand and adjourn in the memory of one of the greatest treasurers that politics has ever seen, and that's Jan Wasson. Thank you.
Thank you. That was truly a heartfelt tribute. Colleagues... Oh, Mr. Kretz?
I hate to do it after such a heartfelt tribute, but just for the record, our most reprehensible constituent was attempting to disrupt this entire adjourn in the memory moment by making a variety of running commentary and a variety of voices, animal noises, and many other attempts at disruption. And I think we should at least note it for the record every time he does it and not let him get away with it.
Thank you. Yeah, that was Mr. Herman. Thank you for that. Colleagues, with that phenomenal tribute by Mr. Wesson, we adjourn this meeting. Thank you. We are adjourned. Be safe.
People say they love the job. I really love my job. I've been with Princess Cruises almost 30 years. If you ever spent time with me, you'll probably come to realize that I live and breathe Princess Cruises. I came to Princess Cruises back in 1989, up the gangway of the Pacific Princess, the Love Boat, which was the most famous cruise ship at the time because of the TV show. Santa Clarita is where our corporate offices are stationed. It's about an hour away from the port of Los Angeles, which we call home. The amount of people that come through on cruise ships, it really is the heartbeat of the West Coast. The job that I do gives guests an experience that they would never normally have on land. My job as manager of Asia and regional programings actually encompasses the world of Princess, truly bringing the destination on board through lots of varieties, from enriching activities to Broadway-caliber shows to live music. We were the first cruise line to put a huge screen on the top deck.